Are you ready to start an agenda review session of the meeting? We don't have any ordinances or second reading, we don't have ordinances on first reading. We're going into resolutions. We have resolution 101 434, approve agenda amendments. Resolution 435, approve change from 9/27/14 to 10/10/14. Resolution 436, authorize approval for utility tax sales certificates. Resolution 437, approve amendment of resolution 081 421, the reason is to pay final legal fees in the amount of $510 to Lawrence Peterman for Sergeant Anthony Storsinski in the matter of Osmond Hernandez, Jorge Lozzi Neves, and Jose Granados Hoya versus the city of New Brunswick. From $3,175 to $3,686.15. Resolution 438, approve amendment to resolution 071 437, the reason is to pay final legal fees in the amount of $514 to Lawrence Peterman for Lieutenant Michael Bolavilla in the matter of Osmond Hernandez, Jorge Lozzi Neves, and Jose Granados Hoya versus the city of New Brunswick. From $10,081 to $10,395.15. Resolution 439, approve amendment of resolution 121 343, the reason is to pay final legal fees in the amount of $391 to the board and associates for William Milligan Administrator Commander in the matter of Anderson Finn versus the city of New Brunswick from $2,054 to[108.72][110.11]$2,441.15. Resolution 440, approve request for use of city property requested by Robert's Recreation Department. The location is Brooklyn Park for an R T C challenge on Friday, November 7, 2014 from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 441, approve amendment of resolution 071 47, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $510 to Benedict Alman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Arthur Anderson versus Anthony Caputo from $9,375 to $9,885.15. Resolution 442, approve off-premise raffle at $50 at the Helgway for New Jersey Foundation for the aging on December 7, 2014. Resolution 443, authorized purchase by the police department of the state contract 8-85943 for Verizon Business Network Services for data communication network services. It's the 12 months period commencing on November 1, 2014 and ending on October 31, 2015 not to exceed $26,064. Resolution 444, authorize lease of copy machine for police department, the I T U of 48 months from G Capital Information Tech Solution doing business at Rico USA for one D to copy your system not to exceed $8 or $0.02 per month commencing on November 1, 2014 and ending on October 31, 2018. Resolution 445, authorize lease of copy machine for police department, the front desk, it's a 48-month lease from E Capital Information Tech Solution doing business at Rico USA for one D to copy her not to exceed $156 a month commencing on November 1, 2014 and ending on October 31, 2018. Resolution 446, authorize lease of copy machine for police department services, it's a 48-month lease from E Capital Information Tech Solutions doing business at Rico USA for one D to copy her not to exceed $124.32 per month commencing on November 1, 2014 and ending on October 31, 2018. Resolution 447, authorize tax collector to transfer several times utility overpayments on several accounts. Resolution 448, approve extension of license to Bank of Ossito Sti for Manugada and LC doing business at the E Lounge, legal license for 14-33 077 012. Resolution 449, approve amendment of resolution 011 418, the reason is state contract changes. Resolution authorizing contract with certain approves state contract vendors for contracting units pursuant to A J S A 48-11-1112A by the purchase agent. Resolution 450, approve off-premise raffle, $50 at the Helgway Hotel for the Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation on November 7, 2014. Resolution 451, approve off-premise raffle at casino night at the Helgway Hotel for Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation on November 7, 2014. Resolution 452, approve order of contract with Cardi Tech Inc. furnish under little of one digital video enhancement system for the police department not to exceed $13,473. Resolution 453, approve fiber optic cable agreement and battery use agreement requested by CSC TKR LLC doing business as cable mission of Madison Valley. The reason is the installation of a fiber optic cable and the location is 18 Handerburg Street, Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. Resolution 454, approve amendment of resolution 081 433, the reason is new date to replace skylight due to difficulty obtaining replacement glass. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and make closure requested by Glass Castle Inc. The reason is to replace a skylight at 410 George Street on Saturday, October 18, 2014 with an alternate date of Saturday, October 25th. The timing is from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 455, a resolution authorizing execution of utility agreement in sewer with the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation. This is in reference to the U.S. Ralph One Southbound from Route 91 to Route 18. Resolution 456, a resolution authorizing execution of utility agreement order with the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation in reference to U.S. Ralph One Southbound from Route 91 to Route 18. Resolution 457, approve request for use of city property and street closure for New Year's Eve celebration requested by the Restaurant Dance. The location is Monument Square for the welcoming of the year 2015. Fireworks will be shut off of the roof of the Helgway Hotel. DJ Entertainment and the show will be street closure leading an avenue between New and George Street, George Street and between Liberty and New Street on Wednesday, December 31, 2014 and Thursday, January 5, 2015 from 8:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And the street closure is from 6:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. Police extra duty required. Resolution 458, approve order of contract with hard construction for the Western Mill Switch pump station roof replacement not to exceed $6,660. Resolution 459, approve order of contract with MTU LLC for the Henry Guest House roof replacement not to exceed $22,526. Resolution 460, approve amendment of resolution 081 465, the reason is to perform engineering review services in connection with the College Avenue pump station litigation with Hatchmont McDonald for 2013, 2014, this area supplemental engineering services not to exceed $1,608. Resolution 461, approve request for use of city property requested by the Cross Recreation. The location is Brooklyn Park Mansion, the pavilion and a small portion of the jogging trail for the custom parade games and candy distribution along with ghost stories and a scary walk around around the running track. This is on Thursday, October 30, 2014 from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Resolution 462, approve order of contracts for truck and equipment replacement parts for Department of Public Works with Yesco Inc. not to exceed $1,500 with North Sea Corporation not to exceed $10,000. The term is seven months commencing on October 16, 2014 and ending May 7, 2015. Resolution 463, approve payment for cleanup of city property, the location is 91 Howard Street and the amount is $1,680. Resolution 464, approve payment for cleanup of city property, the location is 165 Howard Street, the amount is $957. Resolution 465, approve payment for cleanup of city property, location is 91 Henry Street, the amount is $736.50. Resolution 466, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at the Helgway Hotel for the Metocean Parent Teacher Council on February 27, 2015. Resolution 467, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Robert Zuno Jr. on behalf of the piano painting. The reason is to do repairs and re-strike the parking areas at 3 and 7 Worth Street on Saturday, October 18, 2014 with alternate dates of Saturday, October 25 and November 1, 2014 from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 468, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Barker &amp; Barker Asphalt Painting. The reason is curb and sidewalk replacement at 70 Buyer Street as a T V bank. The dates are Sundays, October 19, 2014, October 26, 2014 from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Saturday, October 25, 2014 from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 469, approve amendment of resolution 091 428, change order number three with Silva's Mechanical Services. This is for the boiler replacement in City Hall building and the amount is $1,031.30 and the approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of the original contract. Resolution 470, advise and consent to the appointment of Alexei Wallace as water utility director. Resolution 471, approve reuse of site performance guarantee, volume number B 1057027 in the amount of $778,236 in site inspection fees in the amount of $28,645.3 cents to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital Protherapy Unit on 141 French Street. Resolution 472, approve chapter 159 budget insertion, Department of Justice, award fiscal year 2014 Edward Barr Memorial Justice Assistant Grant and the amount is $96,070. Resolution 473, authorize refunds to Emerson LLC against 4200 Street due to utility fee adjustment in the amount of $3,871.14. Resolution 474, authorized to Columbia Bank against 17 Loveberry Avenue due to payment error of incorrect parcel in the amount of $1,026.53. More resolutions at this time? At this time, we are...
Questions?
Oh? No question yet?
What?
Not yet. How can I help with this? It's just a agenda review.
I understand, but agendas require public participation also called the equal protection of the speech under the Constitution.
Yes, once we start a meeting, then it hasn't started. We're gonna start now.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting is to order.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Council Vice President Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Here.
Council President Escobar?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time, place, and time of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Hall in New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Long Street. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, there's both one of those American and Afghan who have lost their lives in the war in Afghanistan. Mr. Robinson, I would like to have a motion to approve the Venus of August 20, 2014.
Motion.
Second vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have no ordinances on second reading, we don't have orders on first readings, so we're going into resolutions. We have resolutions 434 to resolution 474. At this time, any member of the public who wishes to address the council, you may do so. You come forward to the microphone, say your name and address, and you have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Charles Patadon from New Brunswick. I guess first, let's do the most important one. I would like to ask about the new water director. Is he here with us today, he or she?
He is not.
Has the council had not... Has the council had the opportunity to meet with the appointee?
Not, not yet, not meet. I'd like anybody else, but I have an advantage.
Has the council had the opportunity to speak with the appointee?
No, no.
Okay, well, in that case, I would respectfully ask that you hold that item from your agenda and not consent to the appointment of the person because they have not been able to attend this meeting to answer questions from the public of the council. Is that something you'd be willing to do?
No, because Mr. Kyle Wright, he gave...
Could I ask why you wouldn't be willing to hold that?
He was interviewed by the person that needed to interview. We are fully confident that he's a good candidate for this position, so there's no need to hold him to the appointment at this time.
If I may, how are you confident if you have not met the man or spoken to him?
Because I have confidence in Mr. Black and the mayor with the information that they've provided to us about the experience of this gentleman. Thank you.
Well, with all due respect, I think that this is the latest in a long line of transparency problems that the city has, specifically with the water utility. I think that it would only be appropriate for the person who is being named the water director, set to be paid six-figure income from taxpayer dollars, that he present himself for the consent of the council and be able to submit himself to questions from concerned members of the public is the bare minimum of what should be done. It's what is done at the federal government when the president appoints new people to his cabinet. They have to go for a hearing and they have to answer questions from the legislature. It is what is done at most levels of government, and most other town governments probably do this. I would suggest humbly that since you've admitted you've never met the man and you've not had a conversation with him, that you not cast a vote for him to be our water director until that conversation can happen and that gentleman can come here. There is very little known about this gentleman. I won't, I'll reserve comment on anything about him because I too have not met him and I do not know much about him. Therefore, you should not name him the water director. It's your job as a city councilperson to do your homework and to ask these questions before you take the votes, and I think that it would be a mistake to appoint someone you've not met, who you've not spoken to, to be in such an important position. I think we all acknowledge that the water director job is very important, and the council has expressed that in the past, that this is an important job and we need to find the right person for it. I don't think we can be really sure we've met the right person because we haven't met him. So I would just humbly ask respectfully that you hold that item from your agenda, the consent agenda, and not hire the new water director until he can come to one of these meetings. I think that's only reasonable. I'd also like to ask about resolution 101 439, Anderson Finney Ingram. Can somebody tell me the nature of that lawsuit? Well, point of process, my time is being ticked away while I'm not speaking. My time is still ticking.
Oh, sorry. You get seven seconds back.
Okay, has it been ticking the whole time straight through?
No.
You've been talking the whole time.
Just, come on. Thank you. I was thinking you want to pay your seven seconds back.
Thank you. What's the nature of the lawsuit?
I don't have the file there with me because it's a matter involving his employer.
Okay, I just think that the city spent thousands of dollars on this lawsuit. I think maybe the citizens deserve more of an answer on what they're spending on.
Mr. Hamilton?
If you ask me to do that, I'll be prepared for next meeting and I'm not prepared now. I didn't know the issue was coming up. Next time, review the bills, this came in like, this is one of many, many lawsuits and not the only one.
Thank you.
With all due respect, I think that it's easy to know that this was coming up because it's on the agenda today, and I think that our professionals should show up prepared to speak about any resolution that they hope to get passed. So I would respectfully, lacking a proper response on that, ask you to hold 101 439 and 101 441. Regarding 101 449, what are the state contract changes?
Reading a couple of, I'm answering, a couple of state contract vendors and removing some as well. I think they're listed in the... I think they're listed in the resolution.
Good enough. Thank you. 455, execution of utility agreement. Can somebody describe what type of, what this agreement is for?
Yes, the DOT is gonna pay in the summer of 2015, they're gonna pay the U.S. One Southbound from Route 18 to Route 91, which I believe is Jersey Avenue. And these agreements allow us to get reimbursed for any out-of-pocket expenses associated with the project, meaning if they need us to raise some valve boxes for the sewer manholes or the water manholes, we are eligible to get reimbursed through these agreements.
Thank you very much. I believe that is all I have. I just want to reiterate that the council ought to hold 101 470, 101 439, and 101 441 pending further information, and people presenting themselves here should be here. Thank you.
Frank Bright from the Harville Street, the front of the community, he's 08901. On items number four, five, six, and eight, can we have the Middlesex County document numbers on those?
Mr. Hamilton, do you have that on here?
I don't have that on, I'm sure you give it to them in the morning.
I have to repeat the question, I have to repeat the comment that was made previous to me. How do we have Mr. Hamilton here if he doesn't come prepared? How much do we spend, how much do we have to spend?
Well, we have, we are figuring the bills. He just gave you the information previously. He said that is an employment matter of this one. He goes, send out the document numbers, the city of New York every day fast with him, I'm assuming. So you could have the information in the morning, that's...
Yeah, I can print that information.
Is the resolution, the resolution has that information?
I don't...
That's where he's moving.
Are they in the document numbers?
Yes.
Where are we?
First, we're in city council chamber.
What city? Very good.
Yes.
I missed that, thanks. I'm glad that somebody knew us other than Mr. Hamilton, I'm saying he knew it. Now, Council President, you mentioned that there are many lawsuits over the year.
I think you mentioned that.
Well, there are many lawsuits. Sorry, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But you, well, there was a statement that there's many lawsuits. How are we making sure that these lawsuits are mitigated? Are we improving the process? Are we, how are we improving the process at all?
Mr. Hamilton?
I'm in, not every day, frequent contact with the attorneys or handling, whether they're appointed by us or signed by the municipal joint insurance fund, and read the bills when they come in, listen to the phone, and read any written submissions submitted to retire frequently, certainly, on a number of these cases.
Okay, so are any of these lawsuits relative to personnel matters?
Well, when they involve a person, they're certainly...
Why, maybe with personnel matters?
So for instance, proper team resource technique is one-on-ones with employees. Do we do that with any of these personnel, with city personnel?
Why is your question, when you say with...
Well, maybe that's the problem. Maybe we should understand as a city what proper team resource technique is. What we want to do is we want to manage people in their career arc, and typically that means monthly one-on-one. Do we do that here?
We don't meet with, no, we don't meet with each individual every month. We meet with any employee who has a question or concern of any kind.
I would like to mention to the council that Fortune 100 companies, they make sure that they meet with their employees once a month. It would probably do us, probably save us a stitch in time saves nine, I don't understand that concept, but if we are correct, we would save money in the future. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is Mr. Hamilton making three salaries, one in pension, one being paid first time right now, and another one?
That question doesn't have anything to do with the resolutions that we are discussing. It's only if you have that question, you could ask me the proportion part of the meeting.
Matt the Chair, if we're paying these men three salaries, we would behoove him to have the information when the public asks. They're spending a lot of money on this man, he really should be more competent.
You answered the question to the basis of this knowledge, and we gave the information that you wanted at this time.
All right, so the item 27, the engineering review services in connection with the College Avenue pump station litigation, is the Middlesex document on that? I missed it if it was.
This is how you get new services, review services, Hatchmont, my...
So did this go to litigation? Is there a Middlesex County document, security firm document?
It is in litigation.
So does that mean the lawsuit hasn't filed? Matt the Chair?
Mr. Hamilton?
What does, it's been pending for a long time? Hasn't been filed or not? That's a binary question, right? Yes or no?
Mr. Hamilton, people smile. It was fine.
Okay, so can I have the, can I have the document number for that? I don't see it on six or... Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm all about getting aligned if I'm not.
We don't say have the document number. You're absolutely right, we will get to that information.
Can we just go for the record that it's not available right now?
Yes, it's on the record since 16...
No, but do we have it, do we have it right now? That didn't make any difference. Do we, do we have the information tonight or do we have to wait till tomorrow morning?
We don't have it tonight, the document number.
So I can expect it tomorrow morning?
If you wish so, Mr. Hamilton can make it available.
I would like it, I'd like it first thing, 9:00 a.m. 09:00 tomorrow.
Well, I don't like it 9:00 a.m., but you will get it tomorrow, Mr. Bright.
I said, if you close it in this 16:30, 16:30 hour?
You will get it tomorrow, Mr. Bright. You already gave you that information.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Hamilton, do you have, just make sure that Mr. Hamilton, in the meeting, has your information.
Okay. All right, going on to number 37, it was mentioned by the previous speaker, the water utility director. There's no paperwork in your dockets on this man? Your packages that you get, there's no paperwork on this man?
What kind of paperwork are you referring to, Mr.?
Resonate?
We have the experience that he has, he has 28 years of experience working as in water utilities. He's working in Brick?
Brick.
Brick Township, and now he started as the water meter leader, and he has moved up the ranks. He has the licenses that we need from the city of New Brunswick, and Brick Township, it's my understanding that he has the comparable water treatment facility as we do and the water department is similar to ours, so will be...
What was it?
Anything else, Mr. Locking, that I'm missing that I might?
He has a T4, W4, C1 license, which we didn't require, but that deals with sanitary collection systems, 28 years of experience in water treatment.
And we have the SCADA system?
SCADA experience. He's been the chief operator of the Brick N U A for 16 years now. They treat multiple water sources like we do. They manage a surface water treatment system like we do. They, I think, produce 16 million gallons a day. We produce 13 and a half. We think he's an excellent candidate, meets the, again, the basic requirements that we were looking for, and we're happy to add him to the... we were looking for, and we're happy to add him to the team.
Can you explain the hiring process? How many people was he interviewed by and what kind of background checks were performed?
Mr. Lockman, he's the consultant from moving in.
Yeah, we, we had retained the services of an executive search consultant who had multiple phone interviews with many candidates. He identified two that we, he felt strongly we should interview. We did interview the two, and Alexi Wallace is the best candidate of the two, and we're happy to make an offer to him.
And did that backgrounds, that executive search company today do any background checks, security checks?
No, we will, we will have him do our typical pre-employment physical when the time comes, and we will have the police department research his criminal background history, if there is any.
And the proposed starting date for Mr. Wallace is?
November 3rd.
So if he fails any background checks, the employment has not started yet, correct?
No, it hasn't started yet, November 3rd.
But I'm sorry, if I ever...
So if he gets a criminal background, negative criminal background, does that affect his employment, I guess? That's the question.
We would have to understand what the negativity is.
But we would not be legally obliged to pay his salary if he's not hired, correct?
If, if there's some reason we do not want to retain him as of November 3rd, we will not pay him. But we expect a good, a good outcome.
I'm sure we both would ask for Mr. ... Any questions? Mr. Wallace? There's no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Jim Walsh. I'm the State Director for Food and Water Watch. My office is 100 Bayard Street. I also live in town, 76 May Street. I appreciate that the council has a lot of confidence, you know, in the moving forward of this water program. I, my confidence has been shook. There was a time when I had a lot more confidence than I have right now, and I just would like to remind the council of kind of the things that have happened that have shook my confidence, and in urging the council to take steps to really play an over, a stronger oversight role in the rebuilding of our water utility and with the new director. You know, we initially found out that water quality violations have not been reported for a period of five years, that we had water quality violations that were kind of under the road. The director quit, and we put the mayor in charge and started researching contracts when members of the council seemed to think, weeks after this had happened, the members of the council had no idea this was happening, so like, the fact you guys were surprised was concerning to me. We had a second water qual, water employee, high-level water employee quit shortly afterwards, and there's really been no independent investigation as to why these two high-level employees left. He just kind of took the word of the administration. I think that there needs to be an investigation that looks into this, because it's very unusual to have that sort of dynamic happen. We had a short-term contract that was signed, or an agreement too, by the council, with only a few members of the public being able to comment before public comment was cut off. A long-term contract was released within 48 hours of the, you know, problems coming up with obvious problems that the council wasn't able to answer that I asked these questions about, and wasn't able to finish making the comments I wanted to make to help bring the problems of these, you know, this contract to light. And, you know, essentially, we've been forced in this situation, we're paying out almost a million dollars a year now in fees, and I want to make sure that in a year when this contract is up, that we're not surprised, that we're not, continue to be backed into a corner where we have to pay this private water company any more than we've already agreed to. And I understand that in negotiations, there's, there's give and take. We signed a contract that was less than advantageous to the city. We didn't have a lot of options, but I want to make sure that a year from now, we have those options. And I, I don't have the faith that we're going to have those options unless the council steps in and requires some, and takes a stronger oversight role in the, in the water utility. And so, you know, tonight, we have a water director who's going to be approved without the council, you know, really having met him, but more importantly, I would really like to see the council move a resolution that would, would essentially ask that the water director develop a plan for re-establishing the integrity of our water department, and ensuring that we're in a position a year from now that we don't need to be in this contract, that we can actually expand our public water utility to helping support other utilities in the areas. I spelled out in other council meetings, I think that we have a tremendous resource in our water utility, a lot of extra capacity, and can build out and help strengthen the public water infrastructure in the region, so that other communities aren't forced between a choice of American Water and nothing else, that they will have another option, and we need to rebuild that trust. And so I ask the council to really strongly consider moving a resolution that would require the, the director to develop that plan and require regular updates to the council on the progress on that plan, so that we can see how we're moving towards those goals, and if goals aren't being met, understand why they're not being met, and how we can readjust those goals, so that a year from now, we have a strong water department that isn't going to be in a situation where we have to continue paying a private water company, and that we can continue to expand and help support other municipalities and people in the region. So I thank you very much for your time and consideration. I, you know, could certainly be willing to draft some language for the resolution. The council would be open to that. But I would like to hear, is that something the council would be willing to do and undertake? Some sort of resolution like that, asking for that?
I personally, I don't think it would take a resolution, but I will tell you, and I have told you this before, that this council is very much a, knows, and very much aware that, that the water department is one thing that we wanted to get it to the point that it continues to be the, the best that it is, and it continues to grow, and it continues to do better. Some of the things that you say, I agree with some of the things, but that's your, your perspective on how things happen. Some of it works correct, some of it might look a bit... But what I would tell you is that we are, at least I am very happy that we're able to identify somebody who's able, who has all the qualities and the qualifications that we need. And I agree, I don't think a, a resolution is necessary, but I spoke to you before that, I agree that we need to have a plan, that we need to make sure that, that we continue growing, and that we prepare for the changes that are going to happen years, you know, from now, and to strengthen what we have, and based on the employees that we have, and training, and making sure that they keep moving up the ladder, and they have the opportunity to grow, since they are already working in the water department. I think, you know, I also, I think I told you this, I remember I told you that an update was, is something that I wanted to see, to see, to make sure, at least at the beginning, to make sure that we're going, that we're walking in the same path, and we're going in the right direction. So I am very confident, and I know that things are going to, are going to be doing better. Our employees are excellent employees, and they know what they have to do. And now with the leader that we have now, it is my, my hope that we continue to provide the residents the best water there is, with the quality and the services that they deserve. And the MOU with American Water, you know, as soon as we can finish with them, thank you, I'm looking for going. And that was one of my things that I wanted to ask also, and I asked, what is our obligation with the MOU? Obviously, we need to stay with, because we signed it, but there's other things that we might be able to do, so we're still exploring that relationship, and they're still helping us. So in the meantime, the only thing I would say, I thank you for, for your time, giving us your, your opinion. We listen, some of the things, even if we don't agree with them, we listen, but I, I do agree with you in the sense that I, I want an update. I want to see that everything is going. And again, I don't think it's a resolution, but that's my personal, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I don't think a resolution is needed, but I'm, I'm telling you that I will ask for an update on the water department for the first year.
I, I appreciate that you could be asking that. I think that it would really strengthen it to make a formal request to say, this is the intent of the council. What we'd like to say, that that would provide me a lot more confidence that this sort of oversight was going to happen from the council. And I appreciate your sentiment and what you're saying, but I think that taking most of what you said and putting it into a resolution would probably make me feel a lot more confident, and put a requirement out there that he has to report every other month. If you want to have it, then just put it in writing and vote on it, and say that's the extent, but I hope that you do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the committee wishes to address the council on this specific resolutions? Resolution 434 to Resolution 474?
Read the resolutions.
Exactly. I just wanted, any other stations?
State, 39.
I am abstaining from Resolution 438.
So, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Eskamore?
Yes.
At this time, since you are talking about a solution, there's nothing for discussion. We're going to start the public discussion part of the meeting. At this time, the public has the opportunity to talk to the council, and if they have any questions, any comments, when you do come, you have to state your name and address. You have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Nova Mayor Al Shabazz, Somerset, New Jersey. I was here on two other occasions, where I added complaints to the council, dealing with complaints against community liaison Gade and hearing officer Hall. At the last meeting I was at, I believe Council President told me you would have an answer for me regarding the status of my complaint, so I'm here to find out.
Do we, the status, I don't know the specific status of your complaint, but yes, Mr. Hamilton, you can add me back. Yes.
Well, if it's a complaint, filed about ethics matter, as we referred to the ethics board, they've appointed a subcommittee that will, hope shortly, report back to the full rate.
Do we know when? Can we find out how?
Excuse me, I spoke, I spoke today to the chair of the committee. He has not heard from the subcommittee, and he will call me as soon as he has spoken to the subcommittee, which consists of Thomas Addy and Robin Ward.
Okay, so when does the ethics commission, what meets again?
They, they are meeting Friday night, but it is for the other matter that's pending, the criminal...
Okay, so if I may, in that meeting, if they could discuss a deadline for the, if they could give you a timeline to meet with?
I do have that.
If you could give us that information, so we could pass it with Mr. Shabazz, because I, I want to start working with deadlines.
Excuse me, we've already done this twice before, so we keep playing games here. We discussed this, he interjected with the same comment at the first meeting I was at, and then I explained that the council established the community liaison office, therefore, the council has all authority to make any changes, as well as to discipline the community liaison officer. The council acknowledged that I was correct at both meetings, so he keeps bringing that up each time, playing these games, and we've already went past that. The council acknowledged you have the authority to, to discipline her, and you told me you would have an answer for me the next time I came here.
The, the, the council appoints, approved the appointment of the committee liaison officer, and the council approved the plan that was set forth by the mayor. So we approved that. So that's our extent. We approved those, the appointment, and we approved the plan to, the protocol that, that has... At this time, I was advised that we are, at least I am not able to talk too much details about the, anything related to the community liaison procedures, protocol, and so forth, because of litigation pending with the city, right?
Well, I'd like to say this on the council, is that the matter was filed as an ethics complaint. Now, Mr. Shabazz currently doesn't like that, but the, under state law, under our ordinance, ethics matters go to the ethics board, and you will not hear ethics matters.
So we do have, we, we could hear the matter, you know, in terms of the protocol, and in terms of the community liaison officer position, we approve those.
Yes.
Yes, right? So that's why he's, that's why he's asking the questions.
Exactly. I'm saying the protocols were violated, so how can the ethics committee make a determination on whether or not a protocol is...
We are, Mr. Shabazz, I'm trying to, so, Mr. Hamilton, I know that, that I was advising that I'm not, you know, we're not able to talk much about it because of the litigation that is at this point, from both sides. So what would be, so, what can we do in the sense, the ethic complaints needs to be responded to?
Yes, yes.
If there is...
The, the subcommittee that was appointed by the chair of the committee looks at several things, whether or not the matter is frivolous, whether or not a hearing is required. They have not yet reported back on those two issues. When they do, if they say that it's not frivolous, because a hearing is required, a hearing will be scheduled.
I understand that. I'm not asking you about that. I'm asking you about the process, the, the, the process, the protocol, the implementation of the protocol. If there is an issue with implementation of the protocol, a situation, a challenge, are we able as the council to make any, any suggestion, reviews, or any recommendations of that at this time, based on the litigation that the city is having at this point?
I would say no.
All right, I would like to say this. Number one, city attorney Hamilton already publicly demonstrated his bias in favor of his assistant, city attorney Ms. Gade. Therefore, he has a conflict of interest anyway. He's already tried to cover for her, he's tried to protect her. He clearly stated at the last meeting that I was at, when I asked what discipline would be taken for, for Ms. Gade and deliberately violating the protocols. And he stated, as her supervisor, I tell you, no discipline will be taken.
And I was just saying, I said that.
You just said, okay, so you want to...
So, so, he, he just interrupted me. I was speaking, he jumped in. So he, he clearly demonstrated his bias in favor of his assistant city attorney. That's when I pointed out that she wasn't acting as a city attorney, she was acting as a community liaison, so he's irrelevant. He has no authority, he can't protect her, he can't make a decision whether or not she would be disciplined or not. The council agreed. The council said they would then review my complaint and give me a response. Yet now I'm being told about, once again, you're allowing this, the, the city attorney to manipulate the process.
I, 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 I hear you, and I understand that that's how you feel. Again, I am bound by the legal, the counsel that, that I get. Whether I agree with it or not, is, is, at this point, is, it has nothing to do with what I feel, because I need to be bound by the legal advice of the, that we get. That doesn't mean that, that once we are able, as, if we are able, as, as the council to formulate an opinion, and, and look into the implementation of the protocol, I still feel that at some point, we got to do that. Whenever we are able to do it, I firmly believe that we need to look at that.
I have a question.
Just at this time, I am not able to, I'm not able to formulate anything at this point.
All right, well, I have a question. Prior to me filing the complaint filed as, and complaint for unethical conduct, I had already filed a complaint with the council about Ms. Gade, and it wasn't styled that way. It was just a complaint. So how come the council didn't make any ruling or judgment on that complaint? That, that didn't have to go to the ethics committee, I didn't style it as an ethics complaint?
It was then, due to the litigation, right, Mr.?
So you're telling me that because I have, I'm just answering your question, so I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding. You're saying because I have a federal lawsuit for violation of my civil rights, that that somehow interferes with the council being able to address the community liaison complaint? That's what you're stating to me on the record publicly?
That's why, that's why I was...
The two things are separate issues. They don't even have anything to do with each other. All right, well, let me ask this. I predicted from the beginning, way before I even entered into this process, when you kept encouraging me, Council President, to follow the process. I already told you the process wasn't going to work. I already, I already anticipated the results of the process. Told you that they would exonerate the officers, the internal affairs would exonerate the officers, and they did. I told you that the so-called independent hearing officer would then exonerate internal affairs, and he did. The same thing has now happened also in Mr. Tim McDougall's case. So you now have a pattern where they demonstrate a clear bias in favor of the police, the internal affairs, and they, and against the complainants. Now, he's stating that I'm supposed to go before some ethics committee. I read in the New Brunswick Today where Ms. Bradshaw, who I believe is a representative of the city, of the city spokesman, spokesperson, or whatever.
The information officer for the city.
Right. I read where she stated, according to her, while ethics complaints have been received and reviewed in the past, none of them actually went before a full hearing. That shows that they're, I've already anticipated, they're going to determine my case is frivolous because they're part of the cover-up, they're part of the conspiracy that's been going on. Internal affairs covers the police, the independent hearing officer covers the internal affairs, and now the ethics board is going to continue to cover. This is the pattern of practice that's been demonstrated. Now, what I need to know is what is the council going to do? You told me once I completed the process, if it demonstrated that there were problems, the council would do something about it. You haven't done anything about it.
And, and, and again, I, I haven't been able to do so because I was advised by council that at this time we're not able. But again, I'm telling you, and I know, like, I, I reiterate what I said, and, and I, I am, I am not, this is not the end for me. I believe that we need to do something, that we need to look at the protocol, the implementation, nothing to do with the cases, just the implementation. I firmly believe that we need to look at the way it was done. That's all I.
Right, but you have other people who are going to come behind me, and they're going to get the same results I've gotten, because you, you haven't even determined a timeline for when anything's going to get to address the situation.
Because I, I was told that I am not able to address that situation because of the litigation that we have pending.
Well, my litigation could go all the way to 2015. Right now, according to my discovery schedule, we can go all the way to 2015. So if someone came behind me right now and needed to file a complaint and go through the internal affairs hearing review process, they're, they're going to get the same results I got because you haven't made any changes, and you're refusing to make any changes until what? Until after my litigation is over at the end of 2015? That's a whole nother year from now.
I, I completely understand your point, Mr. Shabazz, and again, the only thing I can tell you, I will continue as much as I can to the level that I'm able at this point, but I'm not, I'm not just going to let it go. I'm going to continue trying to see until we are able to, to address it in the manner that it needs to be addressed. That's the only thing that I can tell you.
All right, all right.
I'm Al Shabazz, Somerset, New Jersey. Has the council received Tim McDougall's decision from Mr. Hoffman?
No, we are not allowed to receive the, the decision, right, because it's against the, huh?
That's correct.
That, we are not allowed to receive that unless it's Mr. McDougall who sent it to us. I haven't seen it.
Welcome back, Mike. Please, your presence.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. Before you start the clock, I'd like to start with a point of process. If I run through the whole five minutes, am I permitted to come to the back of the line and speak again?
Five minutes and that's it?
No, so you're changing the policy?
No, this is something that's been happening. We're doing five minutes for the only quiet comments to.
And you recall when you switched to that system, that you said that people were allowed to go to the back of the line and speak again?
We went back to, we have been going back because I was doing it wrong.
And would you, would?
We were doing, I recognize that activity, it was brought to me that I was doing incorrectly, that the ordinance, the, 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 audience reflect that, so, yeah, the audience reflects that, so I admitted that it was my mistake.
Okay, you think it's better this way?
Regardless of what I think, the ordinance says the five minutes. But we do have, in some cases, the president does have the ability to say, to extend those five minutes with the consent of the council members, so.
Okay, so you think this is a better system this way? Because, the reason I ask is because you are the city council, so if you didn't like this system, you could change it by passing an ordinance, right?
Good point.
So you think this is a better system to limit every member of the public to five minutes?
That's why, but that's why this, that doesn't mean that it's a better system because you're allowed to talk, but that's what the law says, that's what other counties does, that's what everybody, you shouldn't talk about the counties and what they do, things on the county, the cities, and there is only going to five minutes per comment.
And you support that limit, and you are.
I already told you that I don't support it, that I, I, I believe that people should have, they have people to say, you know, when you told me that in the past. I have to follow what the audience says at this point, Mr. Cradville. What is your question?
Well, since, since it's going to be like this, I'll have to do the best I can in just five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
What is the answer to my question about the 290 tickets that are unaccounted for in the city's audit?
Captain Miller, do you have the answer to that question that Mr. Cradville has asked me?
I believe we discussed this last week, the last meeting.
Oh, was it you?
I sent Cradville email. The court was not able to provide you with an exact number because it's constantly changing. They said they received a positive response back from the officers, and they're moving forward. That's all they, the court told me. Police Department does not track the tickets. The court's due.
Therefore, Captain Miller?
So, the city got an audit that says there are 290 tickets that are missing. I found two of them. I brought them to the council meeting. It sparked an internal affairs investigation. Officers were reprimanded, and now you're telling me that there's 288 tickets that are unaccounted for, and there are no answers for where they are?
Captain Miller?
I can't speak for every ticket. It's not, the, the, I can say in general, those tickets aren't missing, they're in the officer's possession, they just haven't been issued yet. Now, there are court rules about how the timeframes, they have to return to court in the proper timeframe, but they're not missing. Tickets that Mr. Cradville brought in were disposed of in a garbage can, which were, was wrong, and those officers were disciplined for their actions. It's not like those 280 tickets, and I can't, I can't speak for every ticket out there, but it's not like they're missing. They're in the officer's possession, they just haven't been returned to the court yet.
Okay, thank you, and I, I do want to say that Captain Miller is, I think, doing what he can to, to address this issue, but I think the council needs to step up here. You got an audit. Can you tell me how many years previously this type of thing has been found in the city's audits?
So we have that answer, Mr. Shabazz, with the police department?
Yeah, with, with tickets not being properly accounted for.
I don't, I don't believe this was a repeat finding, so having looked at 20-some odd audits since I've been here, I don't recall that being a, a finding prior to this year.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Okay. Because I saw it in many audits dating back to 1994. I think the council is making a big mistake not looking into this. There's clearly something very wrong going on. This is not five tickets, this is 290 tickets, and there's no explanation for why they aren't being returned within the proper timeframe. What are you going to do about it?
The same, Captain Miller has been trying to find out the answer. We will find out if something that, we'll have to see if it's something that is continuing to happen, see what, are we ready to, the police department is ready to, is able to do to avoid having this unaccounted high amount of tickets. Yes, Captain Miller?
I can just put something a little more perspective for you as well. When you refer to 290 tickets, there's 20 tickets in the ticket book, so if you break that down, it's 14 or 15 books that are out there, that are unaccounted.
So it's 14 or 15 books full of court documents that are unaccounted for?
Unaccounted because they might be in the possession of the police officers, that's why you say, Captain Miller.
Yes.
Yes, so we, so they have to be, you know.
Yeah, I can't, I can't comment on everyone out there, but that's a reasonable explanation for.
Captain Miller, why is the, when the officers issue tickets, and they have a ticket book that is full of it, what is the, the timeframe that they need to return the ticket book to, what they need to the court, or to where it is that is?
I don't know. I don't know.
So there's not a timeframe?
No, there is a timeframe. I don't know.
Okay.
I believe the timeframe is 180 days, that they either get returned to the court or the officer makes contact with the court and explains why the tickets have not been issued, that they're remaining in his or her possession, and that the court want to code those summonses of those tickets differently.
And who is, who will be there in charge of that department?
Court.
No, 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 no. The officers, the police department was in charge of making sure that the, whoever's in command that night, the sergeant in charge, who is responsible to make sure that those ticket books are returned?
It's also reliable.
To be turned to the court, or to return it to?
Return it to court.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, I may have an explanation for what happened to one of those tickets, but I'm only limited to five minutes, so I won't be able to give it to you tonight. I'd like to ask about the Helmeta Animal Shelter. Why is the city still doing business with the Helmeta Animal Shelter?
Mr. Schabazz, I know in the past, in some of the, one of the last meetings, last month, the week, the month before, when there was allegations about what was happening in the Helmeta Animal Shelter, we have staff, city staff was there, they were there to inspect the place. It was, I think it was Russell, Marqueta, and the police, animal control officers, one of them, I believe, that was there, or somebody from the police department, went to visit the shelter, and found it to be in, in a good condition. It was, you know, and they had been, I know they did one, four, like two visits, I think it was.
At least two unannounced visits.
Two unannounced visits that they went. So based on that, that's why the city continued to conduct this business with the.
Mr. Escobar, not so much just that, the county health department.
Oh, they sent us also. I'm sorry.
Has repeatedly inspected the facility and said it is free of violation, and they are not closing it down in any fashion. We have no desire to send animals to substandard conditions or to receive substandard treatment.
Absolutely.
We're as concerned about it as everyone else is. We've repeatedly been told by the county health department that there's nothing wrong with that shelter.
And, and I apologize, that's why we had a letter from the, the county health department stating so, that they had, you know, it was, in Asama, Mr. Anderson was one that was making sure that the conditions at the shelters were optimal for the animals, so, because of the same reason, we didn't want to make, send any animals there if it was not in the conditions for, for the animals in the shelter there.
Okay, it's my understanding at least one other town was pulled out of that range, and I think the council should keep your.
That's a priority, that's a priority, but we have, based on what the knowledge that we have and the information that we got, we have continued to do business with them.
Okay, I'd like to ask about an ordinance passed last week, or last meeting, for, to create a new position for community organizing specialists. Can you please tell me who's been hired to that role?
No one has been hired yet, but an offer's been made to Keith Jones, Jr.
And can you tell me the salary for the job?
I think it's close to 40. I don't remember exactly, but I can certainly get to that information.
Yes, it is $36,000, which is the entry rate salary for that civil service position.
Thank you.
And is there a specific date that, that Mr. Jones would start if he accepts the offer?
Possibly as early as next week.
Wow, okay. Can you tell me what was done to advertise that position?
Did we advertise the position?
No, we did not.
Okay. Want to ask for an update on the large piles of loose bricks left out around our beautiful downtown? What's going on?
And I see them every day, and I know that Mr. Schabazz has contacted the county to make sure that they tell the contractors to secure it, because they're not secure, to secure those bricks. And I see it, we did contact, and I called them. They haven't done it, that's another, but I see them especially on the area of Nielsen and Albany, that it's really.
Looks bad. It creates a hazard, and I, I don't get the practical purpose of why we're leaving huge piles of bricks around. I understand, I understand it's a county.
That's why we, we contacted the county, but I, I believe, I, I hear you, I, I believe that it's a city hazard also, and we could try again to, to give them another call and make sure that they do secure them.
I would urge the city to do that. It's, it looks very bad. I, I need to ask about a project that was approved by the zoning board for development on the, along the Raritan River behind the Loews Movie Theater. It's come to my attention that that plot of land where the, the development is supposed to be built is kind of sinking into the Raritan River, and it might not be the best place to build. Could the planning director or someone speak to whether that is the case? This building is set for the back corner of the Loews Park.
That's the planning board. Were you at the planning board or the zoning board meeting? Were you able to ask that question? Because I have this, the city council doesn't have anything to do at this point with the zoning, but Mr. Patterson, if you wish to answer that, you can, if you don't have to, if you don't come to answer at this.
The, I, I can't speak to the specifics of the geotech investigations down there, but it is something Mr. Golden was looking into. The area where there is slumping on that property is not near where this portion of the property would be developed. That area is, an area that I believe is cordoned off behind the existing theater, and the city, through the city engineer's office, has been requiring the developer to investigate that further, and I believe there's supposed to be some additional investigation on that. But I do not believe that those issues affect where this new building would go. And all the zoning board was doing, I guess it was last month's meeting, was making an amendment to an already approved plan, just taking out some of the retail that was on the ground floor and replacing it with residential units.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you. I, I have some incidents I need to ask about. Yesterday, there were, I believe, two pedestrians struck at least, Patterson and Elm, and Lee and Powers. Could I just get some information on whether everybody's okay and what happened?
Captain Miller, do we have any information about those incidents?
There are any specifics. They were serious in nature.
They were both hit and run. People, people.
Were they here or not?
Okay. I look forward to those answers. Also, this Sunday, there were some incidents that seemed that there was a group that may have been assaulting people, 9:00 PM, October 12th, Seaman and Lee, and Remson and Welton. Is there any investigation into what happened?
Captain Miller, are you aware of those incidents?
October 12th at 9:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
Seaman and Lee?
And Remson and Welton. Thank you very much. I did want to raise a question about the comments Mr. Shabazz made regarding the ethics board. Is it true that there has never been a hearing of the ethics board previously?
Just heard, Mr. Schabazz?
I, I went back and checked the records, and that appears to be the case. There were, there were complaints filed on rare occasions, and at least one occasion, it was supposed to be without hearing. That was ruled, and when it ruled, it was abandoned.
Forgive me, I don't, I don't understand. Was there a hearing?
There was no hearing.
Just say hearing, that you just, you just, Mr. Shabazz, just say that you took, you did an article in the newspaper, so you should know that answer, so what?
Jennifer Bradshaw told me there had never been a hearing.
But that's what I'm saying.
But someone came to me and said that, that that was wrong, so I'm checking with you. Is that right or wrong?
That's, that's different, because somebody, you should, you know, because you know that they would have been done.
If he wants to give me a name or a date, I'll go back and recheck, but I checked when the inquiry was made, and the answer is there was no hearing. That's to my knowledge.
So to the best of the knowledge of Mr. Hamilton, do you hear, there has not been any?
In the history of the city of New Brunswick, there's never been an ethics board hearing?
The ethics board was created, I think, in, well, since it was created, and there wasn't always a statutory ethics.
Okay, it just sounds shocking that there's never been a hearing until I came along and filed an ethics complaint. It sounds very surprising, so I'm just double checking, but thank you for, for sharing with me what you can. I do want to raise an issue about the fresh grocer space. Does anybody know the update on what's going to happen with that abandoned supermarket?
We have, I don't know if we have that update on the fresh grocer. I know.
I'm working with the New Brunswick Development Corporation, talking to several different supermarket chains. I don't believe that they have anything signed yet, but they are pursuing getting a new supermarket for that space. Hopefully that will work out, and hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Can somebody tell me if Aldi is one of those chains, those supermarkets?
Do you know if Aldi's one of them, is it possible, or just?
I have not heard that Aldi is one of them. Aldi already has one store in town. I don't believe Aldi locates stores that close together, but I mean, it's possible that they do, but they are all, they are already in town.
Yeah, I would just suggest reaching out to Aldi because of exactly that. They have a track record of success in New Brunswick. They had to move once to accommodate redevelopment. They did it, and their new store is successful. They have stores in many different countries. They have stores in many different countries. If we haven't reached out to Aldi, we should.
Thank you.
I want to ask about something that was passed as a resolution at the last meeting. The city market requested space to enhance the experience for visitors during certain Big Ten football games here on certain dates. Can you tell me what, what, what those enhancements entail?
I recall they were going to have musicians walking around the Monument Square area. I think they even in their memo mentioned fire breathers, but I think it's more music-oriented, maybe performing art type of things on the sidewalk in Monument Square.
Cool. I do need to, I do need to just double check on the status of Mr. Edward O'Rourke. He's still suspended without pay, no date scheduled for his hearing.
You asked him to write, I asked him all that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mahoney, suspended without pay, no date scheduled for his hearing.
Mr. Mahoney resigned from the city of New Brunswick.
Can you tell me the date that he resigned?
Expected October...
Third.
October 3rd.
October 3rd. And Director Rawls, is he still...
Still here.
I know he's still here, I just want, I have to ask, is he still restricted from driving on the job?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. And since I have a little time left over, I do want to congratulate the city on some great things. Cyclobia was great this weekend, the 250th anniversary of the fire department, I was able to attend one of those events, it was great. I was at a ribbon cutting for a new building today in 12 Bartlett Street, looks great. I actually used to live on that block, and so it's kind of nice to see, you know, some positive changes. But I do think that the city council could learn some lessons from what's going on with the planning board and the numerous ethical problems there. You know, Ben Buka famously said in this council chambers, this city should run like a business. I think, I think, I think the city should run more ethically. I think the city should run less like a business, more like a family, more like a government should, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, yes, you're so clear, but I think we are going to be a big step, thank you, Councilor, yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, council board members at New Brunswick, it's a life, good evening. My name is Justin Liu. I am currently a student at Rutgers University. I'm here on behalf of Rutgers and Actus, we are the fourth row, all the students back there. Basically, Rutgers and Actus is a club at Rutgers University, we focus on social issues like homelessness, environmental degradation, and the like, and we try to use business concepts to solve said issues. So this is our first council, city council meeting, so if at any time I'm out of line or I'm against protocol, please just let me know and I'll try to rectify that. So the first issue I'd like to talk about is about homelessness in New Brunswick, I'm sure everybody knows, you see it past the train station and whatnot. I'd like to ask what exactly the city is doing to try to curb homelessness, or what programs are available for homeless people?
Homeless is, the city is very active, working with the homeless is part, the city works very closely with the largest promise, and with the county, they have task force and, that are working to addressing the homelessness in the city, not just on the city, but also in the county level, which is high. I know through largest promise, we have an excellent program. They've gone, they give meals to the homeless, they offer services, and they connect them to make change in the community. There's also, the city has also an shelter for men, who are homeless men, and it's run by Catholic charities. The city also has the faith-based groups churches in town, that especially during the winter, they work to provide shelter for the homeless, and every year or a week is a different church that they provide shelter and they do shower. So we have been working very diligently in trying to address the homeless from issues, charities, and it's not only specific to New Brunswick, it's all to the county. We also have, we have been providing also child, the city is working to provide affordable housing, especially for veterans, they have, we have been able to work and provide housing for them, specifically for them. The same thing working with some local faith-based organizations that are also working closely, specifically for veterans who are homeless and the services that they need. So we are pretty good at providing services and trying, we're on top of that. We also, the city has when it's under, I think it's 28 degrees, that is usually the winter, we have home loop, which is that homeless persons, individuals can contact certain numbers and they will be picked up in order for them not to stay out in the street, and the police department helps with that program. I assume, again, through largest promise and the homeless task from the county.
Okay, thank you. One thing that Rutgers and Actus tries to focus on is creating sustainable change, right? So instead of basically giving the homeless person like a meal for one night and then leaving them for the next day, we like to, we like to live by the model, you know, teach a man to fish, you know, believe for the rest of his life, essentially, right? So I'd love, I'd like to recommend the council look into more sustainable practices. I think it's fantastic that you guys are, you know, covering, I think, temporarily like the needs of the homeless, but I really do want to stress that it's important to make it sustainable, so whether that's, you know, providing opportunities for them in the workforce, or something like that, that's something that Rutgers and Actus is focused on, and we want to, you know, build projects to...
If you find me, I would suggest for you to get in touch with the largest promise, while they're familiar, agency dealing with the homeless, and they are already doing some of that, projects that you're asking, that you're talking about, and also the county, they will give you information about the county, they have a homeless task force, I skipped my name, the name of the task force right now. There's already people working in the county and in New Brunswick to tackle, not only because, of course, you have to teach people to be, hopefully to become financially dependent and be able to absolutely, and that's the philosophy that the agencies have, so just things out there, so I do suggest for you to get in touch with them, so that way you don't creating, recreating the wheel, because there's things happening. So get in touch with them, so you can see what they're doing, and you can enhance, and give also information on some of the ideas that you have.
So I'd really appreciate if you could provide that information, organization, whenever you can.
In largest promise, if you go to a largest promise, they might, they will get you the information that you need from the county also. Yeah, they have a culinary school, they have different programs, and the telephone for the largest promise is seven three two five four five nine zero six two, if I don't mistake.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that the city is also at the forefront in the county in providing supportive needs housing for the homeless. We have recently done in the last two years, five different projects, including one with Women Aware, which is the first housing for homeless women who experience domestic violence. Mayor Cahill also spoke at the groundbreaking just a couple of weeks ago, down the street at Elijah's Promise, and I know you were there also. We're doing 10 new units of supportive needs housing for victims of domestic violence. And supportive needs housing, it is a housing-first strategy, which houses people so they can stabilize their lives, then also provides other services to them to address other needs that they also may have going on in their life. So this city has been taking a leading role in providing these types of housing in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, also another organization that provides a lot of these services in Middlesex County, the council president mentioned briefly, is Catholic Charities, and so, and they have many of these ladder, lattice programs where you move through the system to get the services that you need at the point you need to create that sustainable change that we were talking about.
They also run the dimension, and they run also the family shelter.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. So the second issue I'd like to talk about is, I think, raising awareness about garbage disposal and recycling in the community, because if you walk down downtown New Brunswick, you see like, you know, broken TVs on the streets, you see, you know, beer bottles, a lot of, you know, stuff that makes it look really bad on the, on the, you know, tonsils part, right? So I think there's an issue with people not understanding, like the residents being not understanding when the recycling's picked up, or how to recycle, or what, even if the recycling is, you know, followed through after the fact that the garbage are disposed and people pick it up. So I think that's one issue, the awareness, but I also would like to get some understanding on exactly what the process is for recycling, if you want to really, you know, do they throw it in a landfill or recycle, or I'd like to hear about the process.
That's our very, that we are very good at, we just launched an app application for residents to know when they need to, remind them when they need to recycle, when their garbage days are, and we have done an excellent job, and our public board departments, sanitation departments, and we have put campaigns on Rutgers, we send them information, we do out there. Jennifer, you want education, or Jennifer, you want to talk a little bit more about the society? I know that some of the campaigns that we have done educating the people about recycling and the garbage, and have, no, that's, that we have...
Sure, yes, the app you're talking about, it's called My Waste App, it's available for both Android and iPhone, I believe. We also have it hooked up to the city website on the Public Works page, so people can click on it and play around with it. It is specific to each neighborhood in town, telling when your garbage pickup is, you can set reminders on your phone. We actually brought it to the student involvement fair at Rutgers, a number of students downloaded it there and played around with it. We want all residents to download it and use it. We are particularly interested in getting Rutgers students that live off campus to use it as well, since everyone's so hooked up to their cell phones. We have the block captains through our Clean Cities program, who act as neighborhood ambassadors to educate their neighbors about the merits of keeping their block clean, kind of acting as a neighborly reminder, and they also organize cleanups in their own neighborhoods themselves, and we've had a lot of success with that. We often have meetings in relation to our environmental commission, when they meet, we've tacked on meetings from that as well. We're always looking for volunteers for that, that's for anyone in any part of town who wants to get involved with it. We have, we have a number of, what else do we have? We've got...
Yes, we have...
Yes.
Furniture, and computers, and that is the good advice, yes. Yeah, is the gentleman aware of the question about, Jennifer?
I believe that's when you, like, actually put boxes in the norms, and then the college students can put in like their old technology and their old notebooks and something like that.
What it is actually, it's something that the city of New Brunswick and Rutgers worked together on, and the reason was to cut down on the amount of bulk trash that's left in some of the neighborhoods in, you know, end of May-ish when people are moving out. Rather than having students just throw everything on the curb and leave it, it doesn't look good, it's, it's a terrible strain on our sanitation workers, and landlords also run the risk of getting ticketed. So what we do now is we have a whole campaign where students can make appointments to have their garbage picked up first thing in the morning, they get assistance if they need it, there are also two drop-off spots within the city. We've been doing that for three, three semesters now? Three semesters, yeah, going on four, and we've had some great success with it. That information is available on Rutgers University website, if you want some links, I can provide those to you.
I appreciate that. I do have one other question, though.
Yes.
I, I actually am very aware that Rutgers is a huge proponent, and obviously students being connected, their smartphones are always connected, like they, they know, but how are the residents that maybe aren't as connected, or people who don't have access to smartphones and technology?
That's what you must tell me about the block captains, we have always continued our community education campaigns, we go to schools, we go into the community activities just to, we have done several community education campaigns about how everybody's responsible and recycling.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So my fourth, I'm sorry, my third point is actually, I guess, directed to the Catholic...
Right, you have to direct your questions to me?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So this is regarding college student safety. I'm sure as you may have heard, Rutgers constantly gets crime alerts, either of someone getting assaulted on campus, but mostly off campus, so I guess like on Saturday night, Friday night, or something like that, they'll go out, maybe straight beyond the campus, maybe runs or downtown, and then they'll get attacked or mugged or something like that. So I was wondering if the council is taking any steps to prevent this, or to make it safer on the streets, because as a college student, that's definitely one of my priorities, I want to be safe when I go to school. So I was wondering, you are, what exactly, what policies?
Captain Miller? Captain Miller, you just talked a little about the partnership and the collaboration that we have with Rutgers University Police and our police department, in terms of safety, you know, for the campus, you know, for the campus and the students, like, where's the source?
We recently started a community policing team where we teamed up Rutgers officers, and New Brunswick officers, to patrol the fifth and sixth wards together. It allows us to quickly share information between the two departments, we work for our local Rutgers police, and they work with us, but putting the officers together, it just allows us to expand information sharing and a better presence in the fifth and sixth ward, where a lot of the on-campus students are.
Okay. If I may, I think what's really helpful is maybe installing more street lamps or something like that, where it's darker, it's darker, and also those blue safe, safe posts, if you know what I'm talking about, where students can, you know, run to and maybe like hit something, sorry.
Go ahead, no, no, she's talking to me, and I have to say something?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, can you go in French? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So these safety posts where students can, you know, run to in the event that there's an attacker chasing them or something like that, that automatically, I think, alerts the police officers that there's an issue. So maybe installing more of those off-campus, or even just increasing the light or something like that, because when it's late at night, you know, one, two in the morning, it's, it keeps, appreciates your safety on the streets.
Yes, in all practicality, you know, we talk about from one side, you know what I'm saying, what the city can do, we can also have awareness on campus, you know, where people, I went to school in East Orange, you know, and that's the city, you know, that's the city, and we had, we knew where there was awareness on campus, where they told us certain steps, where we don't go everywhere, you know, you don't go everywhere alone, you know what I'm saying, where if you're going somewhere, it's, you know, late, walking late at night, you're not going to walk down certain streets alone, you know, you can also practice safety, because they would, they explained to us, you know, okay, we want to be safe on campus, but the real world after is that we were in the middle of the city, you know, the cops can't be in every place at all, at all times, you know, you always have to have that partnership, whenever it's a campus town, there has to be a partnership between the town and the campus, and you gotta, they gotta be aware, there has to be an awareness, not to scare people, but just to give them some practical tips on how you can avoid things that happen, you know? I can attest that the block in between College Avenue and Cook, Cook Campus, I've been living here all my life, it has improved exponentially, because there was a time when, you know, people didn't want to walk that corridor, because you knew that there was a danger. I see now where we've gotten the development, where we have the dorm there now, and it's a lot more lighting, my church is actually on that street, where it's become a lot more safer, but it can work from both ends, you know? You don't walk out in the middle, if you walk downtown, flash a whole bunch of money, you know, it's like when they tell you when you go to an ATM machine, you know, make sure you're aware of your surroundings, you know, it has to come from both sides, because the cops, like I said, the cops and the public service, they can't always be at every place every time.
Sir, I totally agree with you, I think it's actually plausible for them to, to expect that, but at the same time, I think we can take steps to mitigate something like this, because I think it's actually pretty consistent, the amount of crime alerts that we get, you know, from Friday to Saturday to Sunday, so either whether it's, you know, increasing the amount of officers on patrol that night, those nights, like those streets, or again, installing lights, or making it, like taking steps to make it safer, I think we should definitely be addressing this issue with public security, because it is a consistent thing, even off-campus, especially off-campus.
Thank you.
I believe that's it for me, but thank you again for your time, I really appreciate it. On behalf of Rutgers and Actus, we do want to get more involved in community and more about community issues, and do everything we can as representatives of Rutgers University to help the city council with what you, what you need to do, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Frank Bright, I guess, 21 Markel Street, because that's from Jersey. The ethics board, not meeting ever. I remember Mayor Cahill overcharged student tenants with his cousin, and Councilman Strum at the time, overcharged. I believe an ethics charge was filed against Councilman Strum, and that forced him to resign. He said it was to get closer to his family, but he wasn't married, nor did he have kids, so I was kind of curious. So I do believe that there was two ethics meetings on that, was it a full-blown hearing? Is the question.
Well, as, as Mr. Hamilton expressed before, to his, to the best of his knowledge, there have been none hearings, right? Maybe didn't, maybe what you're talking about didn't, wasn't a hearing, but we could , you could check, Mr. Hamilton, maybe Mr. Bright recalls correctly.
There was something about it, Mr. Shon, there's no question, but it didn't, that's my reflection and the record, at that time, reflect that I went to hearing, but I'll reach it.
Yeah, I believe the ethics board actually heard a bit about Cahill. So getting back to the question that was asked earlier about 290 tickets missing, were they, you know, traffic, police tickets missing, were they in sequential order, or were they singly, were whole books missing?
Captain, do you have any information, was there was sequential, or...
I have not.
All right, Ken, can we find that out? All right, Ken, can we find that out?
They're missing. We have to check it out.
Where is it?
They forced them missing.
Right, so then that begs the question, are the, when somebody signs out something so important as a ticket book, do they sign off on it? Do they, do we track it?
Yeah, so when an officer signs out a ticket book, he signs out. There's, like I said, there's 20 tickets in a book, the officer, he signs out.
So that this audit, did it say that a total book was missing or, well, it, well, clearly 290 divided by 20 means that there's 10 left over, right? So were they singly or were they total books? Did the audit ever said so one way or the other?
Captain Miller explained before that the 290 tickets may be 10 to 10 tickets, right?
I was thinking in general, I said, I do not know.
How many? It's not in general.
This is the right just asked before. I decided, I do not know if it was sequential or not. You'd have to read the law.
Well, it's 14, right? 290 divided by 20 is 14 plus 10.
15 or 15.
Or maybe 10.
So he stepped out for a while, so he probably just had it.
What did I miss?
When he did mention 14.
And then the math.
Yeah, that was true. I've heard it then. So about, about, about the comments that are made by the public, I mean, I assume that the city council is committed to continuous improvement, right? We all want to get better, correct? Is that a yes or a no?
I say yes.
Okay, good. I'm glad we can grant something so straightforward. What are we doing about the personnel matters, non-posted jobs, jobs where we don't do any background checks or we rely, we delegate to an executive search company? We've had Mr. Mahoney who's clearly, clearly getting cocaine charges against a distributor type of cocaine charges against him. Mr. Maloney who committed suicide of city property or department property due to a pending criminal prosecution. We have racial slurs being said against the assistant city attorney, going back a few years, wrongful running by police officers where the mayor actually was a character with this first convicted police officers. And then of course, the bribery in the inspection department that happened with Mr. Kaplan. What improvements have we made to stop these things from happening? Because when you do have a bad element, you lose retention of good people.
So, Latlin, did you give me the question away from, based on the?
We, we make the best hires that we think we can make when we make job offers to people. The issue of not advertising the position that we offer to Keith Jones doesn't make the hire any less meaningful. Mr. Jones is a city resident. He's been very active in many committees. We believe we hired the right guy for the right job. We do the best of our ability, do background checks. We put people through pre-employment physicals, which include drug screenings. We don't, that is not an ironclad guarantee that an employee doesn't run into some difficulty later in the years, but we do our best to hire people that we think are going to be assets to the organization.
And the reason why we use a consulting firm for, to seek a water director was based on the ability to attract or somebody to be able to?
He had, he had experience in developing a list of potential candidates. He had done that when we hired Frank Marasha and Keith Smith. And we just called upon his ability to, to contact people who had those licenses, who lived within, you know, reasonable community distance in New Brunswick. And I think now in two separate contracts, he has performed well and recommended quality people for us to consider.
Thanks so much.
So, pardon?
Say anything else.
So, understanding that, you know, we react to audits and do we, how many processes or procedures that allow us to be proactive when these things happen? Do we sit down and we say, hey, you know, there's clearly room for improvement. This is an opportunity, you know, we have a guy dealing cocaine out of a city car, you know, that, that clearly was not good. You know, what do we do about it? Do we meet about this? I mean, do we have, do we have one-on-ones with people saying, hey, did we see this occur? Did we see this abnormal behavior? Because we're assuming that he actually, there's reports within the department that he was behaving erratically due to drug use. Clearly that's hearsay, but, you know. What proactive measures we take when these things happen?
Does the first, does protocolcy personnel that deals with?
We, we discipline people when we learn of them running a foul of the law or violating any of our agreed upon policies and procedures. And there is a, that discipline is recognized by the many unions that we have here. The process by which discipline is issued is negotiated with those unions. The individual being disciplined is entitled to a hearing if they ask for it. If someone's performance or behavior is so radically inappropriate, we will suspend and move for termination. Again, the individual's entitled to a hearing. You've heard that before. But when we learn of an issue, we respond to it.
There's my last point. You know, just being a city resident for so long, I know every 10 years this roof goes. You can see it right there, over there. The plaster's beautiful. Once the water gets onto the plaster, it's going to be a big job. Mr. Loughlin knows that when he puts out for bid for this, it's going to be a lot of money. So you know that if it's going to happen every 10 years, you want to look at it every seven now. So that's a proactive, anticipate, you know, anticipatorial, if that's a word, way of making sure you don't spend $100,000 because I think that's what it was 10 years ago. So you want to do this with people too, right? And you want to do it in a proactive way, not in a punitive way, right? Many times. So once again, my question and my point as well, I already asked my question, but my final point is perhaps we want to look at a proactive way to deal with people. Classic example is career arch mentoring and one-on-one.
Thank you.
That's a fair point. I just wanted to say this lastly, that we do offer all of our employees a, what's called an employee assistance program, which intends to address a situation on behalf of the employee before it becomes a larger issue. And that service is available to any employee. It's confidential. It's free of charge to them. They can meet with counselors from the Behavioral Sciences Group over in Rutgers. That's who we contract with. So it would be wrong for me just to speak of the discipline piece. There is a, an intervention component to how we react with our employees.
Thank you.
Just one, just one last point. You know, there's, there's something called over-communication and, and it helps, you know, pedagogically, the study of learning, right? So one-on-one, if Mr. Loughlin would like to just try to memorize one-on-one, interpreting the resource management, you might, you might find your job easier.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm sorry. How is that kind of sending?
I'm trying to see if Mr. Latlin wanted to remember or whatever.
It's okay. I've had a million one-on-ones in 22 years.
But thank you.
Fair point.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Thank you. Thank you.
I was told the city had no one-on-one.
Thank you.
So now there's one-on-one?
You mean I've never met one-on-one with an employee, is that what you're suggesting?
As career arching.
Time is up. We're done with this conversation. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, members of the council. Jim Walsh, 76 Main Street, New Brunswick. I had a really amazing time at Sequoia with my little four-year-old. It was really amazing. I hope all of you had a chance to get out there and enjoy it. I'd like to thank everybody who helped put that together. The evening following Sequoia, though, was really rough and it continues to be a problem with the noise in my community and my neighborhood. Calling the police has wait times of well over an hour to deal with cars racing up and down Joyce Kilmer with loud engine stereos. I actually had cars racing up and down my street and I live on a very small street and I may be familiar with Main Street, base difference between Joyce Kilmer and Livingston Avenue. And so I just, you know, think that's, and I know I'm not the only one that has a problem with noise in this city and these noise complaints to be addressed. I think that if we were to work to address some of these issues with the people that are causing problems at eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night, you might have fewer problems at 11, 12, 1 and 2 in the morning. But I, so I would just like to know is like, what is being done with the city to address this? That, this has been a complaint I've had for years, right? And it seems like just nothing is being done about it.
Captain Miller, I know that, so why that race is a long time ago, we haven't heard of it now. Thanks for you to talk me over that. I know that patrols happening in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I think he's asking you the bigger picture. I mean, I've talked to Mr. Walsh many times, I believe that, you know, I understand his problem. We spoke many times, the noise issue. We can't put a car on his street specifically all the time. And he understands that. I'm not criticizing him. But I think what he's asking is how is the bigger picture to address it? That's the question he's asking, not asking about.
The bigger picture is that if we can not have any more patrol, the bigger picture is educating the community. And part of it, in order to educate the police department, has to be there giving, you know, addressing and giving warnings to people when they are spinning around and residents need to fall. So I think it's, it's central to everything. There is a split bumps in that area, so I don't know how people, you know, continue and asking. And I know that they go, and the music, we have, I think that the police and thunder part, we have tried to work hard in terms of even educating residents and trying, but I think that there's something that isn't going. And I think that, I believe that until we hit them with a ticket that is going to hurt them financially, they will not stop, they will stop at that point.
Yeah, there's been tickets issued, like they, they issue tickets and it doesn't stop. You know, you get one person, but they're zipping around and they move. So I think that there needs to be a larger kind of, you know, maybe education campaign with the police department. If we can dedicate two people to just, you know, maybe two squads to just deal with quality of life concerns that are going on. Maybe like if next year, instead of, we don't have to pay American Water all this money, maybe we can use that money to hire some police officers to, to actually deal with noise complaints, right?
Actually, you got a, the point about cyclone here, you know, being happening, maybe that's a way of the community getting information about noise control and how to. So, but thank you, point. I know that it is an issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. Walsh, I want to talk with us a little bit, but one of the things trying to deal with this meeting is like the issues we're trying to do on Livingston Avenue with the road diet to reduce the number of lanes there. That should have some ameliorating effect on the speed. We've also been putting in bike lanes on streets which helps narrow the lane some and helps slow cars down. We have put up the speed radar signs on several streets, commercial, George Street and Easton Avenue to help slow down the traffic. Yeah, so there's a lot of different things we're trying to do out there to do it. It's tough to deal with a sort of a culture where a lot of people in this country like to drive aggressively and fast. And it's not just a New Brunswick issue. It's an issue all over, but we are trying to proactively deal with it.
Yeah. And just to be clear, Jack, I think the stuff that's happening on Livingston Avenue is great. Like it's something that, you know, the community's been asking for for years to get that, that taken down. I hope that we can see a more comprehensive, long-term painting of roads there. And I know that the, you know, county's working on that, but I look forward to seeing that happen. But I just think that, you know, the broader, you know, issue of noise is a major one. I went to the Second Ward Block Club meeting, talked about it. Like everybody's like, just, just really blown out, but yeah, they're like, I have the same problem and concern. So I hope we can address it in a serious way.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this moment to invite the community next Saturday, the annual march against domestic violence in the city of New Brunswick from 11 o'clock in the morning to 2 p.m. and we want to meet at First Reform Church at 11. And we wanted to march around town, telling the community and giving the message out that domestic violence is not welcome in our city. Saturday, October 18th, this Saturday, at this time, yes, 11 o'clock in the morning to 2 p.m. Yes, since this is our last council meeting before election day, I just wanted to remind everybody to get out and go. At this time, are we ready to say a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Esposito?